Good evening, everyone. My name is Joan Beal. I'm the Chairwoman for the Planning and Zoning Commission. It is currently 7:01. This meeting may be attended in person or by remote video or telephone conference, Zoom conference. Access information was provided for the commission members, applicants, and other interested persons to participate. It was noticed on the agenda posted on the Towne website. For all those attending, I'm going to ask you to zoom yourself if you are able to do so, so that we do not get any background noise. I have two very important reminders. First, every time you speak, you must state your name and title for the record. Second, we must be careful not to speak over each other, so that everyone who's listening can hear what's being said. We have a clear record. For this reason, it's necessary when it comes time for the commission members to comment and ask questions about a particular agenda item before taking any action. And then to vote on that agenda item, our Planner, Maureen Justy, may call the role as needed. Also, the regular meeting is being recorded, and the recording will be posted on Towne's website. I'm now going to ask Maureen to take attendance by calling the rule. Thank you.
John Michael O'Brien was asked to be excused. Sandra Coppola.
Here.
Diane Tracy.
Excuse.
Timothy Zigmar.
Excuse.
Brian Rogan.
Here.
Steve Womack.
Here.
Peter Zarabozo, alternate.
Here.
Andrew Leggany, alternate.
Present.
Steve Biella Jr., alternate. And Chairman Beal.
Here. Okay, so, thank goodness, all my alternates are here, so I'll ask all of you to receive this meeting. Okay, let's move on. The review of the minutes for November 18th, 2021. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes? And are there any corrections needed? The only thing I see is that it says a review of the minutes for May 20.
That was, oh, it said it on the minutes, too? Okay, so take that back off the minutes. We took that off at that meeting? Oh, no action taken, that's why. It says no action taken on the minutes.
Okay.
None was.
All right, okay. All right, other than that, I have no comments, but how does everyone else feel about that?
Wanted to approve the match.
All right, thank you, Mr. .
Christian Womack.
Thank you. Does that have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Biella. All righty, terrific. All is in favor?
Aye.
Polls opposed? All right, so move. Now, on to, sorry, on to the bond release for, which is a request of Michael Casetta for bond release at 1207 Farmington Avenue. And what do we got?
So, we're working diligently. Finance Department has been spending a lot of energy to clean up bonds, older bonds that have been found on the record. And this bond of $912 dating from 1995 was found for 1207 Farmington Avenue, which is Michael Casetta's first building on that two, there's two buildings right adjacent to each other, kind of in front of Stop &amp; Shop on Farmington Avenue. The second building was built closer to 2010, I think it was. That had its bonds released in 2013, and for some reason, this 1995 bond has still been around. We were not able to find references to why it was held. However, the property was inspected by the Deputy Director of Public Works and found that there doesn't seem to be any outstanding issues that we know of. So, Mr. Casetta submitted the paperwork to request the release, and staff supports that release.
Okay. Any questions? All right, Mr. Womack has the motion.
Second.
All right, Mr. Biella. All righty, second. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Some move. All righty, mention of public hearings. First up is that this is, no, public hearings, a special permit site plan amendment of James Nehan Window Restorations of Connecticut LLC for contractor shop for a window fabrication operation at 604 Ron Road, Unit 7. Good evening, how are you doing?
Good, good night. Yes, Commissioner Rogan need to read the call into the.
Okay.
Thank you.
My bad, sorry.
I was zoning out. On a Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing notice, the Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing as a regular meeting on Thursday, the 7th, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. In the Towne Council Chambers, Berlin Town Hall. Public hearings, 240 Kemington Road, Berlin, Connecticut. Interested parties may join the meeting and participate in public hearings in person or remotely by video or telephone as provided below. The following public hearing will be held at which time opportunity will be given to those who wish to be heard, all due to the following application. Special permit slash site plan amendment of James Nehan Window Restoration of Connecticut LLC for a contractor shop for window fabrication operation at 604 Ron Road, Unit 7. The application or related meeting materials are available at the Planning and Zoning Department, Berlin Town Hall, 240 Kemington Road, Berlin, Connecticut. Needed this 17th day of November, 2021, at Berlin, Connecticut. Brian Rogan, Secretary, Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission.
Christopher. All right, good evening, how are you doing?
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Ma. I work at Law Offices of Manhattan, Georgia. I'm here on behalf of the owner, James Nehan, of Window Restorations of Connecticut LLC. And as the name of his company suggests, that's what their specialty is. They take older windows from buildings that were damaged, and they restore them. That includes changing the glass, weather stripping the windows, painting sashes, replacing old parts, making new ones. Basically, making an old window into a new window, once again, looking like new. So, there's really no other business like that, very unique. They have some of the work to be done at the property. You can see the blown-up picture of the map. Highlighted in green is the building unit. That's private association. And so, all the work will be taking place either at the customer's site or in that building. So, there's nothing taking place outside. And every day, Mr. Nehan expects around five to seven employees at the site at most. Customers never come to the property because the company goes to the house to do a lot of the work there as well. So, absolutely, it's going to be a difficult for the contractor to change, including the building official and fire marshal to visit the building to address any concerns they have. And the building officials would agree that the proposed use of the building is classified as F1 factory and industrial use. So, the building is actually currently approved, and there's no updates needed at the time. So, really, the permit is just moving into the building as it is and using it when it's going to be used for whatever. It actually also going to have two mobile trailers. I think there were two photos included in your application package. So, this is also unique for his business in that he's able to do the work to the clients and also whatever cannot be completed on site. So, anything gets put into these mobile trailers and brought back to the property to complete that work. So, it's really those trailers are not for storage, therefore transporting the product and any of the work. And so, the proposal is that there are currently 10 parking spaces at the property. And I believe it was highlighted and marked where the plan is to have those trailers parked. There are 25 feet, 30 feet trailers. They're, you know, they're the kind that you can get to your car and just ride off. And they're really meant to go, you know, to the job site fairly on a regular basis. So, it's just really parking there with another vehicle. So, there are two available places, but not all the parking space for any of them each day. If there are any questions, I'd love to sit down here if there's anything you can answer.
First, do you have any question at this point? I think we have one. So, if you're going to come and read through the numbers in my house, is the trailer now going to go to the house and stay at the house?
It depends on the project. So, if it's a bigger project, it could potentially Mr. Nehan would coordinate with that customer wherever the job is. And again, the job is all over the state.
Yeah. So, this trailer would then be used like somebody who's doing siding on a house would bring the trailer on site and have all of their cutting tools and everything inside the trailer, bring them out, and use the trailer basically for securing the stuff. So, is that the same mindset?
Yes, I believe that is. Where exactly, they can bring the work there, store their things at that, you know, in the middle of the midst of their work, but not for a day.
This is a public hearing, so is there anyone from the public who would like to address the permission regarding this project? Beautiful, or a guest, and that would be the time for us to. So, yeah. I have a few questions. Maureen, do you have anything?
So, I did want to just point out, as she was talking, I think some of you were looking. I took and brought up the aerial view. And now, this is the site plan showing the two spaces that they're designating for the parking for mobile trailers. I want to make that differentiation, as I did in the staff report, of the difference between the parking of a trailer versus storage. The parking would, from the zoning standpoint, and our enforcement officer would expect the trailers to be moving on a regular basis and be parked there as opposed to being stored there. You'll already, most of you will recall it, last year, modifying the outdoor storage regulations to allow for storage for trailers as long as they met the special permit criteria and any buffering or screening or anything or other requirements the planning zoning commission put on that. So, that's something the commission needs to acknowledge as to whether or not this meets those parameters as is, as well as contractor shops don't have a parking requirement. That is the parking adequate for the use and a determination to be made at the commission meeting. So, that's, those are the two things I wanted to point out. Otherwise, everything else is in my comments.
So, they're basically claiming that they're going to have between five and seven employees onsite at the factory.
Yeah.
Okay, and your parking spaces are basically equivalent to 10?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And then, how many would you need to absorb by the trailer? I mean, I'm assuming the trailer's going to be there on the weekend, or like Saturday night, Sunday, and then moving again on Monday.
Well, there are two trailers, so it would just be two.
All right, they fit into one space? They would fit into one space?
Yeah. The trailers are basically just like a van. It's just a different option, and they'll fit, they'll fit into any parking spot. So, it's kind of like, it's supposed to have a van and employees grabbing vans in parking.
It's like a small truck trailer.
And just park now that.
Okay. All right, just want to make sure we cover everything we need to. All right, so those are my questions, thank you. And the issue was to play with the question.
With most of the first public here.
Okay, motion disclosed by Mr. Rogan.
One second.
Second by Mr. Polo. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It was a close move, thank you.
Thank you.
Second one is actually, it's a site plan in the old house building, but this hearing is actually continued to December 16th, 2021. So, we're not going to take any action on that tonight. So, we're just going to move into old business then. Old Business Special Permit Site Plan for James Nehan Window Restorations of Connecticut LLC for the contractor shop for the window fabrication operation, 604 Ron Road, Unit 7. Okay, so we've seen the presentation. We had a chance to ask our question, but I think staff has a concern just about the mobile trailer. Does that pretty much?
Yeah, really, that was for the record, and so, just bring everybody recollect the amendment to the regulations.
Okay, so basically, we're just looking to know that they're not going to be permanently parked there. That they're going to be mobile, and they're going to be turning off. You know, we hope that this is doing really well, and they'll be on the road. Okay, all right.
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit site, 604 Ron Road.
All right, thank you, Mr. Womack.
With status condition?
With status.
Or with, or as, as, I guess. I lost my page. That signage returns, that the.
But, yeah.
Yeah.
And this one. Okay, well, then, do we have a second? Second, okay. All right, you have seconds amended as well. Yes, all right, thank you. And you heard the discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close move. All right, site plan for the little house again continued until December 16th. So, moving on to item C under Old Business Site Plan Amendment of Town, Toronto, on behalf of MC Barber Academy, 1427 Berlin Turnpike. And, hi, how are you doing today?
Not as good as two days ago.
Oh.
Not as bad as two days ago.
Will you be using this? Should I leave it there?
Yeah.
Okay. If any of you need me to scoot, I will. I have to stay here. I'm connected.
First of all, I'd just thank everyone here for putting up with us, actually. We're trying to get this resolved in a way satisfactory for everybody. And it is difficult because processes, I saw it, turned on its head, basically, the way it was done. Not because of any, any problems with the staff or the commission. The, just a little history. I came on board on, I guess, only to affect a building permit for the refurbishment of the remaining part of the building that was on fire recently. And the rear part was demolished. The building official and the economic development coordinator were the first, my first contact with the town on this. And I was tasked with making sure that whatever improvements were made on the remaining structure, that the building code requirements and structural requirements. So, I was unaware that somewhere in that process, and I don't know when, because I wasn't hired to do anything else, there was, there were discussions regarding the special permit, the tax change, and all that kind of thing. I had no idea that any of this was happening. If I did, I would have inserted myself into the process and suggested that the process contained three steps, basically. The first step would have been to determine the right to rebuild the part of the structure that was totally demolished. In many regulations, there's a percentage, for instance, of the part of the building destroyed, usually 50%. If more than 50% is destroyed, you lose the ability to reconstruct, basically. You have to come in for a new site plan and all that kind of thing. And the other part that is usually addressed in this kind of thing, when you go for a special permit, it usually covers the entire site. And it should not be subject to a site plan, basically. It's a use, it's a use kind of thing, that you can, you can attach to it requirements of a site plan. But normally, they're done separately. But you have the opportunity in your regulation to do it either way, to attach a site plan to the special permit, to streamline the process. I understand that. Unfortunately, what it did, it, what goes on the land records when we record it, it shows that the part that was covered under the special permit is not the part of the building that's, that was included in the site plan. So, therefore, we're trying to resolve that now, and staff has done a wonderful job in outlining how that could be done, by doing modifications to the site plan. So, basically, I would have addressed it in a way that made sure that the structure, regardless of use, was able to be rebuilt, because that was the purpose of my clients purchasing the property and understanding, basically. But what happened was the survey and site plan of the original approval many years ago was submitted, but it did not show the rear portion that was going to be the subject of the special, special permit. So, in effect, if we file that, it goes on the record as applying the special permit use to the wrong part of the building. MC Barber has, is two separate entities, actually. He's MC Barber Shop, which he's operating now, which is, has a right use. See what I'm trying to say? So, you can understand, things went this way. And in the future, if someone looked at the record, they would see that the, the only part of the combined building that was covered in the special permit is the wrong part. Is that what I'm saying? Everybody understand that? The front section remains pretty well intact, needed some structural revisions. And in good faith, that was what was done between the owner and the, and the staff, was to put together a triage type of thing to get things done quickly, because construction was already underway. So, what I want to make sure, and we've been discussing this with Maureen, is how to do it. She assures me that the modification will take care of that. So, my only suggestion is that the, that the modification that we're talking about now does two things. And that is to reference the original approval and grandfather in those requirements, because those, those don't change, basically. So, what happens is, if we constantly modify, we're subject to some of the things that were allowed back then, but not now. And those things haven't changed. It's really the building that is the subject of this, plus the, the, the application for an accessory structure as well, which we can talk about there. So, I would suggest that part of the modification would be the submission of the original site plan in its entirety, showing the rear section as well. So, that, that assures that the, that the rights that my client has to maintain those parts of the project that weren't, that weren't affected by the, by the damage to the building. Now, I know it's not your intent to try to get us to do things that we don't want to do, because most of the, most of the items in the report by staff are fine for us, basically. We would certainly come in with a new site plan, because there would be some changes in the landscaping and things like that. But there are some things that don't seem to make any sense, such as eliminating 11 parking spaces in the rear, because there's a slight encroachment into the 50-foot setback line. I mean, it's been there for close to 40 years. Just paving on the ground, basically. So, those are the questions I would like to have you discuss at this point. See if we can resolve that. I have no problems with the suggestions in the, in the report. I've done a good job of showing an alternative, and we'd be happy to do that in the site plan that I prepare. But using the model that was done for the first phase, using the existing plan, sort of set the tone, the existing approved plan from, what was it, 1986, I believe, whatever it was. But anyway, I submitted the same thing with the entire building shown on as part of this application. But I want to make sure that that is part of what would be approved, so they could retain their rights. Because, let's face it, if this doesn't go through, it doesn't build that second section, it's, it's going to be a two-occupant site, such as like a mall, for instance, two separate occupancies. And it really wants to maintain that, because it has two separate legal entities. So, we don't want to restrict it to one or the other, see what I'm saying?
Yes. I understand what you're saying, and I think we need to have a discussion, we need to have a discussion with our town planner. To just see how do we set this all straight.
Okay, so, what I hope will be simplified is that, obviously, there was a larger building there that burned several years ago. The rebuilding of that would require a site plan approval, because we've gone beyond six months' time to rebuild that property with our regulations, and generally speaking. So, the use also changed. When the use changed, they applied for the permit for vocational schools as well. Some of you will remember that. Some of you weren't on the board at that point, on the commission rather, at that time. So, the language has changed to allow for the barber shop and barber academy to be at this location. I'll say the location as the parcel property. There are times we do special permit for one specific tenant space within a multi-use property. In this case, my reading of the special permit was, it was, the use of the property was the combined use of the two picks. The understanding that I got from the commission at that time, and I believe Mark was full staff at that time, or the town planner at that time, but I was on staff, was that they anticipated coming back with a site plan to rebuild once they were up and running and got started with the academy, as well as the barber shop in the smaller part of the building, the existing part of the building. They'd come back for a site plan to extend the building, rebuild on the existing footprint. And that's what this application has been processed as, is a site plan amendment to allow the rebuild of the site to, to allow for the use to use more square footage. But, and that being both the barber shop, as well as the academy use, the barber academy use. The reason for needing to know this, what portions of the building or how much of the building is used for each use, is it's what I, one of my favorite terms since these meetings is hybrid, kind of a hybrid use, where we have to calculate parking based on both things. So, in order to calculate the parking, we need to know how much space you're using for each kind of use, so we know how much parking you need, and other zoning parameters. So, that's where the square footage comes in, whether the square footage is in this part of the building or that part of the building, just like a bathroom. I don't care where the bathroom is, as long as you have the bathroom, you know? So, so, this was processed as a site plan amendment application to a special permit use and existing site plan property, and which is why it's a site plan amendment. So, the application I see before him, before you is, and it's not on the screen, the property itself is on the screen, is to rebuild. There are existing site improvements, including the parking area, and there is an outstanding violation on order for the storage container on the site. Yeah, the, last I knew it was still there. They are appealing that order to the zoning board of appeals, and that has not been rectified. However, with this application and under some preliminary discussion with the commission a couple of months ago, his application includes moving that trailer, his proposal to move that trailer, I think it was to move it into a compliant location if it was to be deemed an accessory structure as opposed to a mobile, a trailer, a container, or whatever.
Question, if this building goes to the original footprint, which was before it burned down, is there really a need for this trailer? I mean, once it gets built out, do you really need this trailer onsite?
Well, it all depends how you use the interior. Building is used for a very light, such as a normal commercial building. They can do their product storage. This accessory building is what most people use it for, for, let's say, lawn, but not a lot of lawn, but, you know, kinds of things that you can do. Things that would, that would help the property to be properly managed, because he does everything himself. He, right now.
I guess what I'm saying is that this is, it's a pretty sizable container you have there, so it must be one fancy lawn mower.
Well, and MC has been his own contractor for a while. His, his experience has been in rental spaces, in urban, like urban-like situations, basically. But most of the work he did himself, his experience is based on interior fit-outs, which didn't. interior fit-outs, which didn't require the same kind of overview, complaining and zoning. Normally, it was just a permanent requirement. So zoning agent would stamp it so they can get a permit to do the interior fitment, basically. So when he started this project, he didn't explain, or maybe he did. Well, but see, that, but it has, it has an awful lot to do with how the original application came in. In other words, the the storage trailer, basically, if you want to call it that, it's called a shipping container, you know? It's not a trailer either. But that's kind of wagging the dog right now because the process is continuing. If it had been done the way I'm suggesting, it would have been a continual process with the phased construction. So he's using it now for a field office and storage of materials that he's purchasing in advance of starting the actual construction because that's the way someone like him can manage costs. For instance, he buys, he buys materials that are available and they cannot be stored outside and there's no building to start them in now. So as part of the process of going from refurbishing the the front part of the building and building the second requires drawings done by me as an architect, which I just started after the completion of the first phase.
So what is he, what is he asking us for?
Well, first of all, he doesn't want to move the trailer to the I don't want to call it a trailer either.
Well, whatever that
Yeah. The store, the container, because that's what it is. That's what it's doing. If he wants to use it to store materials that he's purchasing as we're going on hold, which is indicating that we that we had a C of O, basically, the zoning enforcement officer acted on saying, you got a C of O there for construction, it's finished, and it's not. As a matter of fact, the main purpose of the, of the the permit was for something that was allowed, not part of what was approved. Follow-up set. So technically, if they came in with a total master plan and had phases on it, all of this wouldn't be, wouldn't be a problem because it would be a continual process. And all he had to do was apply for an extension of the, of the container as part of a contractor's office and
So the purpose of this container is just to hold building supplies while he builds the addition, the last phase?
Yes.
The last thing, and then this container is going to go away?
Well, we're applying for it for a use as a, as an accessory structure.
All right, so he's looking to make this permanent on the site?
Ultimately, yes.
Something like some, I mean, like, and if he's done building and doing his thing, then really all he needs is something for landscaping equipment and a lawn mower. So he could actually go out and buy like a shed that's pre-made and find a place to put it. And it would be much more attractive for his students.
Yeah. I mean, it would be hidden behind the building. It wouldn't be visible from the street. It's buffered by on both sides, basically, and it can be at least painted in a manner that would be appropriate and screened. So technically, it
The gentleman that was here with you last time you came back, I don't know, it was a month or two ago. Commissioner Miller, at the time, was on serving on the commission, made a point of the illegal signage on it and how the, being, or the art, whatever signage, she said slothly covered up and that the barber pole had not at all been covered up. And the gentleman with you agreed that that would be covered up as he did admit that the barber pole was signage. So next time I drove by two weeks ago, it was still shipping container. So that's just more of a matter of principle for me that I was told over two months ago that it would be covered up. Last time I drove by.
Well, you're absolutely right. We don't disagree with that. I think, I think the zoning enforcement officers complaint was addressed according to what she observed at that point in time, that there was completion of construction or maintaining it. That hasn't. That's not the case. They haven't even started construction.
I'm not asking about the use of the container right now. I'm just talking about the legal signage on it. And you came before us last time, you told it, we came it over, including the barber pole that was on it. And I haven't been by recently, so I guess my question is, has that been completed? Has that barber pole been
It's been painted over. I don't know if it's had the final coat on it. It requires two coats, basically, because something, you know, comes through. But it's, I think, I totally agree. First thing I told him when he got the cease and desist order, I go, I'll bet it's because of the sign. And that really is the reason why. It would not even have been noticed if the sign wasn't on there. And I agree with that. We don't want to fight this down on this, basically.
Maureen, I'm sorry.
I, so the enforcement order has been appealed to the zoning board of appeals. And it was scheduled for the last meeting. They did not appear, so they extended the hearing to next month. For the zoning board of appeals, that's for the appeal of the order of the shipping container as an unsightly material on the site. The site plan application includes a proposal to relocate the shipping container so it's not as visible. And staff understood that proposal was going to be presented as a temporary situation while the construction was happening, should the site plan amendment for the addition be approved. We continue to maintain, although it's a matter under, for the zoning board of appeals to determine, that the CO was issued a new site plan is required to build something else, so therefore, they don't have an open building permit. A storage container for use when they don't have an approval for any more construction is moot. But that again is a CBA out of, that's easy for CBA. Not for this board. This board would be whether or not you would allow a shipping container on a site for a limited time period as for construction or as is sounds like being presented for as a permanent accessory structure on a property. On this property. As it is a special permit, the property is subject to special permit use conditions as well. While I was not staffed to the commission at the time, I believe there was an approval that included a shipping container or more for landscape materials that are not suitable for inside a building that is in that same area. It's diagonally across the street. And that was allowed, but that again was a landscape material supplier that was for materials unsuitable for.
So your purpose of this shipping container is for beyond your construction, I'm talking about.
Can I, can I just make one statement? It's constantly referred to as a shipping container. It meets the definition of a structure in a building. And if you say shipping container, I mean, every building is a container or something. A house, basically, isn't it?
You're the one that's referring to as a shipping container.
No, no, I'm sorry.
I don't think you should be reprimanding us.
I'm not.
No, you are. It's a little offensive. And then you come back and you say shipping container and you keep using the word. So I don't think we need to reprimand. Let's just move forward.
Okay, I'm just saying that basically, looking at the regulations, there is nothing, obviously, it's not allowed because it's not it's not mentioned in the regulation. Now, when you define something by use, you would say it's a shipping container if it's used for shipping. It's actually a storage container. I'm sorry. Sorry, I made that slip because I keep seeing it all the time in print. And I'm not I'm not trying to, you know, be a wise guy and challenge you on this. But basically, it is a metal building, basically. That's really what it is. It is not used for shipping. I mean, there are places where they have been used for residential construction. Putting several of them together. I'm not saying I've
I think we are, because I think really what it comes down to, and I think Maureen said it the best, is basically we're here to look at the overall project, to go ahead with the last phase. And but a part of the agreement would be is that, and this is what the commission has to decide, is that once that structure is finished, once he's moved in, we have it all built out, that shipping container, that container must go. And is this what the commission feels like and perhaps in a different accessory building, accessory building should be put in, like one of those prefab or whatever, if he needs it for housing? You know, stuff, landscaping stuff, as opposed to this unit being moved just someplace else on site? Because Maureen, isn't there, there's a neighborhood back there? Right? And that's, that was my other concern too, is that even if he should choose to move that, or we should allow him to move it, we're only to be moved to on that site. How close is it to another house? And is there a reasonable bump?
So this application, and I'm imagining in our scan that went out today, we all not have brought back the materials from the last meeting. But this aerial view, they did not add it to the site plan that shows the existing, because they use the existing building site plan that was on file in the town offices, because they're just going to rebuild the portion of the building that had the fire on that same plan. However, the aerial view shows it in approximately this location, if you look at the screen. And right now, it's more, I'd say here. And this shows it here, meeting, so in the northeast corner of the site, side of the site, I'll say. It must meet a twenty-five-foot side yard setback and a fifty-foot rear yard setback from the residential uses that are to the east. And this is, I think, the entrance into Yeah, it's this motel use that's immediately to the north is another business, another commercial property. So this one has the, the east side has a greater setback than the north side.
The distance between another structure on the residential side would be close to a hundred feet. And buffered by a heavily tree. You can't see, if you stand on our side and look towards the conditions, you can't see them most of the time because it's oh, it is okay.
Well, other commissioners, how do we feel about that? I mean, basically, it comes down to that. What do we do with this this structure on the site? Does it have to go away after the build-out? Or should it remain?
Personally, I don't have an issue with it if it's properly screened behind the building. The thing that got me going was, like I said, the last time you came before, you set these sizes, you painted over, acknowledging that it was signed. So I just passed it and the MC harbor agent painted over a bunch of barber pole which had been on record acknowledged as signage. And not, to not do something so simple, it takes fifteen minutes and can't paint, then come back before us, it's just a little bit of a piece to make.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Rogan. The storage container that's typically used on ships can be placed and screened behind the building.
Are you that, Mr. Sir, Mr. Sir, are you just saying that that you would allow for it then to be part of the permanent site plan? Or what if it have to be?
It should be temporary, but it should also be moved in temporary.
Okay, all right. I thought that's maybe what you were Andrew?
Maureen? We have an issue though, because we've already allowed some of the cross the street to do it. That we say
that we now flip back and say, well, first, the same zone on the street has it, but you can't. Does that cause our zoning issue?
They are special permit uses. It is a special permit uses, so there can be conditions on a property. Zoning has consistently, to the best of my knowledge, considered these shipping the container, to be, sorry, I don't want to use the wrong word, to be unsightly materials and as something that is utilized on a temporary basis. And that's the way it's been interpreted. Again, the words nothing of the regulation. But that's an interpretation that zoning officers make and I was a zoning officer. My interpretation was unless otherwise approved, they're unsightly materials and a temporary item, they've been considered as we would a a trailer, a construction trailer and what have you. Construction trailers in the regulations are only allowed as a mobile offices for during construction periods. Those are specifically. That's not a quote, but that's roughly what the regulations.
Anyone else down there?
I would just look at it too, if the building is made out of brick, steel, wood, whatever it's going to be made out of. I think if it meets the proper setbacks and is screened properly, whether that means we have them put in, you know, shrubbing and fencing or whatever around it. To have been, you know, permanent, but it would have to be strict guidelines. Because again, you know, it doesn't matter if it's a wood building or a metal building, it's still going to be a building to store things. And I think, you know, personally, I think I was getting hung up on the fact that it's again, it's being, it's going to be used to store items regardless of what it's made out of.
Could we, could we do this? Could we say that it would remain on site temporarily blocked in the back of the building? Pushed away to the side until after the construction is done and the CO is issued. And at that point, we would request it be removed. And for some reason, the applicant was so moved become fond of this container or whatever reasons, needs to have it there, they would have to revisit the commission for the permanent placement and possible permanent placement of this container. And this way, it was, it would allow them to go forward with the construction. It would move the container out of sight. And then we could bite over the container later on.
Can I answer, can I answer one part of it?
Yeah.
The way it is now, if it's moved, it'll still be visible from Berlin Turnpike.
Well, it's going to have a paint in it.
Well, yeah, but it'll still be visible. After the construction, if it's moved to the other section, you can't see it from anywhere, basically.
Well, that's something that we'll have to see after the construction. Because I have no idea what these new constructions go like.
I can show you that.
Well.
And we will do that. We'll do that. As long as I know what I have to do, satisfy you.
I believe that that condition of approval can be this special permit use with, and this is in a site plan amendment, that special permit use can put a condition on the site plan for a time period. The accessory structure, yeah. The accessory structure, yeah.
Yeah.
I just gave you an apartment.
No, do I?
That's all we need.
So, but not, but forget the special permit in your motion, it's just that allows for you to have the condition, but this is not a public hearing. So it's not a special permit application right now, but it's a modification, yeah, it's a site plan can have more conditions.
Kind of motion would also entail that if you painted it over, uh it would be completely. So there's no signage at all, and does it also require that it be moved? More to the back or or covered to the building?
I I I will say, I will say that from a construction standpoint, where it is now is more accessible to vehicles bring bringing materials in. No, uh without having to go all the way around what is gonna be a construction site. And and that's the only, you know, caveat that I would, I would say. Uh that we'd like to move it after the construction, basically, because there's gonna be activity all around the building. And and uh. You know, it, construction is a, is kind of a, kind of a difficult thing to work with.
No, I I I understand.
Big trucks are coming in, delivering lumber.
Trying to help you with this.
No, I understand, I I just, I just wanna give you another.
Trying to, you know, trying to have you meet us halfway here.
Yeah, yeah, if 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 it were, let's say if we were a general contractor on the site, you would have something similar to this on the site during construction. And it wouldn't be subject to a lot of the things that we're talking about now. The rea- the reason why we're doing this is that MC is his own contractor, basically, at this point. So in in not having a general contractor bring another thing on site, he owns it. And he owns the site, he owns the site, so we'd like to be able to, he's paid for it, why get rid of it and have to bring it back again or or. Rent something that does the same thing, that's all I'm saying.
Okay. They wanted to.
When would you expect construction to be uh completed by February?
Well, probably not gonna start till the spring, obviously, because of, you know, the weather. Conditions, the one thing we have in our favor, we could start earlier than that because we're building on the existing foundation, so we don't have, don't have that problem. The problem right now, quite frankly, is cost of materials and accessibility to it.
So he's not planning to start till the spring anyway?
Well, we could start sooner. We could start sooner, but I I I'm just telling you that. That's probably the best thing that we can get everything done anyway. Uh, actually, I've been spending more time doing the construction drawings, because on a CAD system, that's best way to do it, rather than come up with a preliminary sketch. For planning a zoning and then have to start doing construction drawings, I've been spending a lot of time on that. And um we have to be cost conscious, the idea is this is gonna be a big, large, open space, it's not gonna be. The arrangement's gonna be depending on how he wants to, you know, do it, so we have to decide what the occupancy is with parking and all that kind of thing. But he also wants to maintain the possibility in the future that if another use comes in that requires all that parking, we don't wanna eliminate anything that was approved prior to this. Now, we don't have to use it all, and we don't have to stripe it all, but there's, there is some pavement on the ground, I mean, is it, does it make any sense to dig it up for what reason?
Questions?
I just wanna point out, just in the staff notes here, um it says, should the commission allow temporary use? Should utilize this thing, caution. Yeah. You know. I think it was traditional approval. You know, I believe with that, I think that. Moving. And out of sight to the rear field building while. During this temporary time again.
I.
I I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't get, oh, wait.
I'm just pointing out that the uh mayor or whatever we're referring to that should be moved behind the building during this temporary time. I I I think, you know, that if there's plenty of space behind there.
I I I I'd say, I'd say that's okay, I mean, but I I think it. It makes it more difficult, but it's okay. Uh, when when they were doing the the first part of it, a lot of the material. That was brought to the site and some of the stuff that was demolished was located where we would probably. Be uh locating this this temporary structure. To be hidden from sight, basically, you see what I'm saying? It. There's unintended consequences with that, you know? Right now, that's, that's, that's the most uh protected spot from from view. So there there is gonna be stuff that's not gonna be taken away from sight for a while. And frankly, uh the reason, one of the reasons that the zoning enforcement officer cited for the removal that it was. Just the opposite of what it's doing, you know, it used a section that was designed to eliminate outdoor storage of. Materials that were hazardous or unsightly and everything like that, and really, the structure does that. Keeps them out of view, but there's parts of the, of the construction process that we can't. Keep things inside, basically. I gotta have pipes and things like that.
Okay, that is not to scale, it's way bigger than the um eight feet by forty feet, that's what I had control over right now. Um, with the tools at at hand, um but that's the approximate location for it to be located, it would have, um, I would suggest that if allowed to relocate, it. Certainly would have to meet the zoning step setbacks for his accessory structure on the submitted plan, I believe they were five feet short um. At the un-northerly property line, however, given the comments made about accessing it for um. For this during construction. Um, I'm wondering if perhaps instead of orienting it in that direction, they were to orient it. This direction.
Yes.
Then it may be accessible, but still moved from the current location, which is closer to this area.
And it would be freshly painted too.
So, so that would be something for the staff, if should I, should I had known this conversation, I would have maybe suggested that in my staff report, so trying to find solutions.
That's a good, that's a good suggestion, I think this kind of thing gives us something to work with.
Okay, and then um of course then afterwards, the whole. Idea of it becoming permanent is a whole separate. Well, you'll come back.
And maybe after the zoning board of appeals, it determines the upholding of the enforcement order as well.
We almost really. To 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 the level of law, if if they go back to the ZBA for an appeal, correct?
Mm-hmm.
If we really shouldn't be ruling anything on this accessory structure until after they've made their ruling. So if we approve the site plan today, subject to moving it to where staff thinks it should be currently. And then we revisit this accessory structure at a later date, so that gets them started on their plans. It gets ZBA their time to do their thing, and then if that works to their benefit, they have to come back before the committee then to discuss the vote.
As a permit.
Get started.
Yep.
Tuck it in the corner, goes before the ZBA let the that process do, we can't overmove it, that's the point, and then I think that's kind of a win-win for everybody.
Yes, I think that that makes a lot of sense.
And it it was why they were advised to include it.
I wanna make that motion.
And and include that within the, the um.
The placing of structure.
As a.
Staff feels it should go appropriate.
For for the period of time of construction. Okay, now I don't wanna lose sight of something, okay, go. Your choice.
If if you would, just, just to consider, um. Uh, we have to ask for extensions, of course, because well, it's six months old, we start in the spring, there's a gap, however. I do have a building permit out in my name, because I'm doing the, the uh the assessment, which involves demolition of part of it, of the foundation base for the parts that can't be used. So. I'm I'm making a claim, I'm saying this facetiously, that construction is continuing now, see what I'm saying? So that the issue of whether or not. Uh, the uh construction has stopped. Can be ameliorated somewhat.
So I would suggest that, yes, they do have a permit for testing, you know, testing on the site, however, they're not. Until you make an approval of a site plan amendment that allows for reconstruction of the um demolished portion of the building. Then. They don't really have a building permit for construction. And I might also suggest, because of the length of time that a site plan is approvable for um statutorily, that. You also put an end date that they then might come back for an extension. So from your approval, if construction isn't completed within a period of time, or rather commenced or. Commenced, if they haven't obtained a building permit for that construction and construction commences. In a set period of time, then it's no longer a construction site, you know, because they can wait ten, you know, five years, ten years to start construction. I I would not be opposed to the six month or, or less, I I mean, I would prefer lesser, but that's, you know.
So they're actually.
I'll add in there, six months.
So you amended.
Oh, amended, my amended, amended, amended.
So, but but actually, the prior to a motion, if at all possible, we have lost sight of. The application for the reconstruction of the building and its design, architecture and size. That. And perhaps you've all looked at in your packets and are comfortable with and don't feel you need the presentation from the applicant and which. I leave to you, however, that we have a site plan as well.
Prefer to do, is we've been making progress on the, on the design of the building. And I.
Hang on, I have a motion on the floor, I need a second for discussion, a second, second thing, that's all, just before, okay, now we're in discussion. Alright, so, um.
Discuss whether you wanna hear the, I, in my opinion, you should see, you should determine whether you want to withdraw the motion to hear the presentation with regard to the. Um, design of the reconstructed building, or if you have enough information before you on that construction, then don't need that.
I have no idea what.
Yeah, I I I'm gonna withdraw, since I got caught up, I was trying to solve the issue.
No, we all do.
If everybody agrees with me, you see this, how it looks.
So the motions. The second withdrawn, yes, okay, so every, so the motions are withdrawn, the second's withdrawn, okay, so let's look and see.
What you have.
What you got.
Well, this was.
I can't, I can't.
Uh, I do have some uh. Unfortunately, I uh wasn't able to get everything printed today, we're working as we go, so if I can at least give you a rough idea of what has been finished today but not printed. This is what we're talking about in general, we still haven't finished a lot of the details. I mean, we're we're doing it as construction drawings, basically, it's from the inside out, so there's a lot of little details that have to be done, for instance, the walls, but those aren't completed yet. No, she doesn't have it yet, I just.
So the, your, the submission materials included in your packet. Yeah, these drawings.
It wasn't complete, she has no roof on it at that point.
Which I didn't realize wasn't complete, because I saw the parapet and thought that was completed. Um, and again, the other two walls. Uh, I don't believe I have a full set of plans, if I do, I'll hang them.
I mean, they're, they're here, this is what we. Bought the last one. They are reasonably complete without a lot of the details, and this shows the full scale of the, of the building.
Looks like it's all gonna be broken.
Yeah, the back is gonna be concrete block, you have to build a concrete block, basically, we wanna get a nice textured block, so.
Can I hold for one second? If I hold your pages, could you go stand by the microphone so that your voice can be picked up by the recording and for anyone watching?
I mean, this is basically the, the raw building with a lot of mistakes. The windows have been changed, the parapet's been changed. Changed the one that hasn't been built on, on the first part of the building, from this, he preferred a rounded one that you'll see on that plan there. And that's what we've completed to date, but haven't printed yet because we ran out of time, basically, frankly. But this gives you an idea of. What it looks like, there's no indication of materials on the backside, it's just bone, and we will do some new fenestration up there. The uh, the other.
Any windows on the top and back?
Yeah, on the back.
For natural light?
Natural light, that's, that's why I say it's hard to see, it's just a matter of rendering, that's why I didn't wanna present it.
Maybe frame down at all or?
Well, what it is based.
Check for a second.
Yeah.
I've been in this current building. And it's gorgeous. What, what, if they carry that over to the next building. I have no wish of that, because what he did on the inside is really, really nice.
Right, he's a very talented guy, yeah.
A lot of natural light in the building, he didn't skimp on materials, he didn't skimp on anything, actually, I thought he spent a lot of money for a shop, what do I know about the guy's business? But it's, whatever it's worth, John, it's gorgeous.
Okay, I was just looking at the back and I was wondering about security, and he has a doorway there, so I was thinking about security lights, I was thinking about, is he gonna have cameras back there?
Yeah, that that's, but let me, let me just give you an idea of what. Maureen pointed out clearly that we didn't show. The use of the mezzanine. It's inspired, and the mezzanine is intended to be his, his executive suite, I wanna call it that. And basically, it's open to the area below. Open to the area below, he will have a, he will have a bathroom in here and a little kitchenette, so doesn't have to go home and eat lunch all the time and order out. And basically like a, not an apartment, because he's not gonna live there, uh but a sort of a refuge, right now, he's operating out of a closet. In the back of the front building here, back here, that's his office right there.
This can be an employee lounge.
It it it'll, it'll, it'll be both of those, basically, but the employees. Uh, by and large, will be in the front section of the building, in the part that he's now using as. What I would call an accessory use, which is the teaching over in this part of the. This part of the building right here, this room here. And I I think Maureen picked up on that and and included that as part of the. Special permit use, let's see, we don't want it to be limited to just that in this, in this building, it's gotta be, this is the. Academy, this is the barber shop, if you drive up, up the road, you'll see the big billboard he's got, it's listed as MC Barber Shop. And that's an LLC, and the academy is an LLC, so there was just a, just a communications.
Alright, so we're just trying to resolve it, alright.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
For the record, I would suggest that they could have an office suite, but of, anything that could be considered as a dwelling unit would not be allowed to. Be constructed, once we see the floor plan, the staff would have to be looking at that to make sure there was no. Dwelling unit being created within this commercial building. But, you know, you have a office suite where you have a couch, you have a couch, you know, executives have couches in their offices.
Couch ready machine and maybe, maybe a small. Sink.
And configured as an apartment, configured as an apartment where the kitchen is only accessed by that livable unit, then we would start. To have to evaluate whether it was a dwelling unit or whether the kitchen is there for an office use.
His representative already stated that this is not a dwelling, so that's another way.
Yeah.
And it's open, it's open to the area below.
Got you, yeah, I got you.
And also access.
Just put it on the record.
I'll put it on the record, alright, so we have a new motion, you want? Do you want more?
I'm gonna do this the easy way. I'm gonna put my uh motion back in subject. Subject to materials and such being approved by staff since we have somewhat of an incomplete presentation in front of us. Okay, for safety, security, and quality.
And your previous comments. And your previous comments.
And all my previous comments.
I will second again. Thank you, alright. Further discussion. No.
You're so positive today.
No, I am, I am positive. So all those in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed? So.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your patience.
No problem, just get it done.
Uh, I I do have, I do have, I do have some letters to have to the uh for his own appeals for the extension.
You can just leave it, I'll take it as, yeah, just leave it on the table and I'll grab it.
Your copy too.
Yeah, just leave them both at that end of the table so I don't get my two permissions. Can I, you have a copy of the rendering?
Yeah.
The rendering state, thank you, just check. I did strike September fifteenth, I also stro- stroke the first meeting in January, which does, similar to this year, immediately follows the holidays, so becomes problematic for processing.
One meeting in November and December, anyway, okay, so that's the calendar, guys.
You can make amendments to it.
Yeah, we can do amendments as we go along, we need to adopt legally, anyone have a motion?
How many can we do that?
Thank you, Charles, a good second. Okay, thank you, for the discussion, all those in favor? Alright, according to the eight twenty-four of the Connecticut General Statutes Review or Recommendation of the Matter of Construction of a Trail, tip in that, Town Hall, let's stand first of all.
Thanks, Maureen.
Okay. Have anyone wants to talk about that?
You got me, could you hold on one second while I try to alert the corporation counsel that we're approaching? It is, okay, diminutive improvement, you'll recall it number a while back. Um, the commission had an eight twenty-four for a bridge being constructed behind Town Hall to Percival Fields where there needed to be a bridge constructed by a Boy Scout. Um, this item is now for the construction of the trail that will then link Town Hall, that was the purpose of that bridge, and they um town council approved forwarding it to you at their meeting on Tuesday night, so now it's forwarded and we're um looking for the commission to um approve the eight twenty-four, give a positive referral to the town council with regard to it, we're expecting to connect through Marjory Moore um as a first step, and then Percival Fields is um set to have some field restoration, so they'll do the second step of the field around the field as a second phase to the improvements.
The motion to adopt the twenty-four.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roman, we have a second.
Miss Shirley, any seconds?
Alright, you're getting right in there, thank you, Mr. Riley. And for the discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Onto the discussion regarding the approved buffer restoration plan and site conditions for Commerce Street Holdings, LLC at thirty dash thirty-six and eighty-six Commerce Street.
Well, this is a discussion that Corporation Counsel wanted to have, and I believe she's trying to point. She did reply. So. Uh, I'm going to say maybe we can jump forward to to um other commission business matters until she joins the meeting. She has been in quarantine for some time, so.
Do we have any other business?
I have two items I would like to discuss for a second, some feedback. Um, we were approached by the um natives on their, for their Demming Road property that's across from Episcopal Road. Um, there is, they're asking to modify their lot line, which is something that generally speaking, staff does have the authorization to handle. And um also modify in two thousand fourteen, they were granted a site plan, a unified site plan approval for that property that has multiple buildings between the properties, there's more than one property there, there was a subdivision, the um three properties, I believe, is now what exists there, and they um part of that site plan approval had an adjustment of the driveway to the east. The that has not come to fruition, they've never moved the driveway, they haven't built it, you know, they didn't finish that out, so the driveway's still where it was, it was moved to the east and approved further to the east. They're now with this lot line revision, want to move it between the approved location and the existing location, which is a little to the east, but not as far as to the east that was approved. And I did forward it to the police department because they had comments with regard to the driveway um back in two thousand fourteen, as did engineering. I've gotten back the police department comments, they have no traffic concerns with it being moved, however, wanted to note for the record that um if a site plan comes in for building additional structures on the property, they would want a traffic analysis. Uh, but so my question is, can I handle this administratively with regard to the driveway movement, as long as the police department and engineering have no objections, or would you want to see it as a site plan? Able to please. Um. And an FYI, at the last meeting, um you authorized staff to schedule the excavation hearing for Stan Cam, or Stan Calm is actually the LLC. Um, we have since had them, um they've applied to the Wetlands Commission, and today we received an extension um through the January twentieth meeting, so I'll be scheduling that hearing for January. And now I see Attorney Coppola has joined us. Add it back to you to return to the orders of business.
Uh, the order of business is the discussion of uh we're, we're talking, Attorney Coppola, about the discussion regarding the approved buffer restoration plan and site conditions, Commerce Street Holdings. And we understand you're not feeling well, so just you can cut to the chase with us, or we'll keep pace with you.
That's great, I appreciate that, I hope all of you are well, um, so as you're aware, um, there is pending litigation with the ZBA uh regarding upholding a cease and desist order that Maureen had issued concerning some site changes at um thirty to thirty-six and eighty-six Commerce Street and removal of a buffer that was there, of a detative buffer. Um, in working to resolve the violation, you'll recall that your commission did give approval of a buffer restoration plan. Um, the buffer restoration plan utilized an ASBIL that, an ASBIL survey that had been prepared by um Bascom Benjamin uh back in January of twenty nineteen. Um, and it was developed as part of a twenty nineteen application for a unified site plan uh for all the properties, so for thirty thirty to thirty-six and eighty-six Commerce Street. Um, you may recall that uh they were looking to bring in a new tenant to the property at that time. Um, and it was anticipated that a new unified site plan would be coming in uh with an expected marketing of the property when the existing operation relocated, because they're building a facility um in Tresher. Um, the survey shows changes from the last located survey from two thousand and four and used again in two thousand and nine. Um, that survey was used for the ZBA motor vehicle use approvals, it included changes to the gravel parking areas and a new connecting drive between the two parcels. And settlement discussions regarding the buffer, um with Maureen and I had um a conference call with counsel um to go over final language for the stipulation. Um, I, we all concur that we should be addressing what we're going to do as far as um addressing compliance with those changes as well, so um we just wanted to get a sense from the commission regarding uh what what the commission might be amenable to, because obviously, the site plan changes fall under your jurisdiction and authority. Um, and uh one of the things that we had talked about, and Maureen, please feel free to jump in, we had talked about potentially um having them submit an existing conditions survey. Um, because eventually, there's going to be a new tenant here or and very likely a new property owner. Um, so we wanted to talk just a little bit about, again, how we tie up those remaining issues and what your thoughts are about um providing some some timeframe with regard to when uh a a new site plan would be received, under what circumstances, and ultimately, what that means is uh forbearance on those issues as far as enforcement is concerned. Um, because obviously, we have all expected that, um, you know, they would be addressed in a subsequent site plan, so um just wanted to get some thoughts about that. Uh, you know, wanted to make sure that you're amenable to that as we proceed forward in preparing some language with opposing counsel. What we anticipate is that um if you give us the go ahead, you know, we will, we will get together with them before your next meeting on December sixteenth and and come up with some additional language to include in the stipulated judgment to address it, so that our all parties know you know, going forward, what we're gonna do to address those specific changes to the site.
So I'm gonna jump in, if I may, um, because we know, we know so, so well what she's talking about and and you guys see it every few months, or every, once a year, um, so there was a a site plan for this property, um eighty-six Commerce Street that was you, or survey that was used at the time that they got their most recent approvals for the uses that are there. Um, we have this enforcement order and the restoration plan that was approved um last month with regard to this area here and mitigating the removal of the buffer that was part of those approvals. Um, so that was taken care of, the underlying site plan they used, or the new survey they used that was created in twenty nineteen um also shows some extension to gravel, and it was acknowledged in twenty nineteen when you denied that integrated site plan that they had connected the driveways, and we all really expected they were gonna be coming in again to address those issues, and they haven't, then that hasn't happened yet. Um, however, the buffer is underway and we I would like to see that get restored so that we can move forward with the neighbors being buffered again. Um, but that some of the gravel that has mysteriously pushed the driveways a little wider than you know, the twenty, two thousand four plan um can be addressed within a specified time period, but as in the stipulated agreement, as opposed to that stipul- that um settlement, having to wait until a site plan is um is submitted and approved, we can move forward with getting that finished and then make sure that they come in, or they'll have another violation. Did I say any of that incorrectly, Jennifer? You're on mute.
I was concerned that I might sneeze or cough while you were talking. Um, uh, yeah, no, that's correct, I mean, you know, we, again, we had an application before you where they had proposed a tenant, um, there was a moment to that that they were hoping to get a business to relocate to the property, you know, so that that this is, you know, taking a course, I mean, they've been, you know, they've been trying to find a tenant. Um, like I said, you know, they're gonna be relocating part of their business, so we we've known that eventually, you know, it's gonna get addressed, but it's good for us to put a timeframe and agree to the timeframe now so that everybody knows what to expect um as far as that's concerned, and it, if we don't include it in the stipulation, it kind of leaves a loose end, so to speak, so um, you know, it's good for them to know as the property owner, and it's good for us to know, uh, you know, what we're looking at in terms of when it's gonna happen. So, um, yeah, that's it.
I guess we need, you're, so I think what we're looking for is a consensus support by the commission that we include that language.
Yeah, anyone?
The buffer was approved for plantings in this area here, if you're looking at the screen, that's where, that's, they have, they had started, I reported that the last month or so, they had, they have um substantially done that planting during this season, we had expected it to have to wait to the spring, so it's really great that they got that started, even though we hadn't.
You you had given them until the end of April um at your October seventh meeting, that's what the timeframe that is in the stipulation currently, um, but yes, the majority of the plantings, they've reported put in at this point. So that was a surprise, um, their contract was able to get, um, was able to get the plantings and make it happen.
And and for the record, you know, they still don't have use of this property, they don't have approval for it, but we would expect that a new site plan um should they be able to successfully market the property, will reflect their needs, not necessarily the needs of this of their complete operation, or the portions of the operation that are moving to their new facility.
Alright, so yeah, I think everyone's done more for that. And thank you, Jennifer, thank you for that update.
Thank you.
Okay, if you feel better, alright, so that ends last of that, so then at this point, I guess executive session will be the next thing that we need to swing into, so with executive session, uh we will be ending the recording, I guess.
You have to vote, you have to take your session first. The time is eight twenty-nine PM.
Yep. And Maureen, you'll you'll give me a call on my cell, is that how we'll proceed?
Oh, yeah, that's probably the best way to do it.
Okay.
Thank you.